Can I rent a restroom real quick?
Good afternoon, we'll be starting our meeting in a couple of minutes. Testing. Good afternoon, it is 4:36 PM, we want to start our meeting with the first item on the agenda is to establish quorum.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, we've established quorum, Mayor Nori Gonzalez Garza will be unable to join us even on Zoom today, and also Councilwoman Abiel Flores is not with us today either.
Thank you. The next items is the invocation and the pleasure of elections by our city manager, Randy Perez.
Good afternoon, everyone, can I have everyone please stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, as May is Mental Health Awareness Month, we pray today for those who have confronted by the sadness and confusion of mental and emotional illness, look with mercy on all whose afflictions bring them distress and isolation, bring them understanding, helpers, and hope for the future of breaking free from this mental illness. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated.
Disclosure of conflict of interest, Ms. Anna?
No, sir, we have none.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentations and the proclamation for Francisca Hernandez de Tanguuma on her 100th birthday.
Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, we do have Ms. Francisca Hernandez here with us today. We have members of her family, as well as Father Roy Snipes is with us here, and I will read the proclamation, which reads as follows. Whereas Francisca Hernandez de Tanguuma was born on April 22nd of 1923 in Cedral, San Luis Potosi, Mexico. Francisca lived in Cedral up until the age of 18, at which time she moved to the city of Mission, where she lived with her aunts. Whereas Francisca worked as a dressmaker and married Conrado Tanguuma, who unfortunately passed away in September of 1977. Whereas Francisca was an active member of Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church, participating in community festivities such as the Jamaica's and Christmas ends. With those festivities came along meals. Francisca would make and prepare 400 pounds of menudo, chalupas, and other meals that would sell very quickly. Whereas she was also a part of a group from Our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church, where she visited the ill at their homes and hospice facilities, supporting them with prayer. She gave lectures and sang with the church choir alongside Father Roy Snipes every Sunday. Whereas for many years, she also volunteered at the Mission Housing Authority, helping serve her fellow friends' meals. She has also been a resident of the community for nearly 45 years. Now therefore, we the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby congratulate Francisca Hernandez de Tanguuma on her 100th birthday, which was celebrated on April 22nd, 2023, proclaimed on this the 8th day of May, 2023.
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on. Congratulations.
Happy, happy birthday.
Are any of the family members here?
Have to come and give her a kiss. We need a bigger boat.
Yes. Yes. Should we call him?
It's got them all nine above. On that all nine above, rich and handsome, different people.
We can have also the Mission Housing Authority, I know she's a resident for you all, and so appreciate you all coming, being part of the picture.
What a blessing. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of Sherland Rattlers 2023 state semifinalists boy soccer team. Ms. Anna?
I do want to take this opportunity to recognize, we do have some administration from Sherland ISD and also some coaches, and I ask them to come up and be recognized. Ms. Pam Montalvo, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, Ms. Lori Garza, Principal of Sherland High School, Mr. Ron Adame, Athletic Director, Mr. Tom Lee, Assistant Athletic Director, Mr. George Guerra, Head Soccer Coach, Soccer Staff, Gilberto Alanis, Marco Alanis, and Felipe Torres. Thank you all so much for being here. We're extremely proud of you all representing not only the City of Mission, but the Rio Grande Valley as a whole, of course Sherland Independent School District, but we're extremely proud of these young gentlemen that went and represented well, and were semifinalists at the state level, extremely proud of that, and of course, being part of Mission. So thank you all so much for that. Congratulations each and every one of you.
Yes, congratulations.
Well, thank you Mayor, City Manager, and City Council for inviting us to be recognized, right, for these great group of kids. It's been a very beautiful experience for everybody, for the families, for the kids, for our community. Just the send off that we got to go to the state level, it's perhaps the second best season of school history, and representing our school and our city and pretty much the whole valley, right, it's a great honor. We're very thankful for all the support and for the, especially, I mean, it starts off with the parents. I think we have a great community, we have great parents, great students. We're losing 16 seniors, and I can brag about what their accomplishments, not just on the field, but 11 of those guys are academic all-state, so they are just as good on the field as on the classroom, so I think that's just as big of an achievement for me as a coach to know that these young men are going to continue their post-education and do great things in life. Once again, thank you for having us. We did get some tokens of appreciation, some soccer ball signed by the team, and a couple of jerseys. There's one, I think it was for the...
The mayor.
For the mayor and...
We are so blessed to have such good students in our Mission community. Congratulations, God bless you, and for those that are graduating, may God continue with you on your future endeavors, so on your college, so thank you, God bless you. And I believe we also have some medals, and I would like to miss, to pass, give you those medals, and also if our deputy city managers can help us with those.
Sir, we would ask, thank you so much, we will ask each of the players to come up individually up here, and so that way we can all give each a medal representing on behalf of the Mayor and the Council and the City of Mission for their accomplishment. So we can have a line coming back one by one, so we can, and then at the end, if y'all can gather there, so we can take a group picture at the end.
Oh, thank you so much.
Oh, por allá. Oh, I said through the front.
Line up along the edge right there, the tall ones in the back?
Oh, I watched, I watched the person, it is so good, I like it. It's really good, and the other one, it's... It's really, it's really, really good. I finished it before I was ironing. So I just finished it. Very, very good.
Ready, one, two, and three, or four?
I talked to you, sir, we can do one by one. I was just trying to save time.
He can present those two?
Yes, and then we'll take a picture of that, they can do first two, and then we'll take...
Did you have some players that aren't here? Yes, and there's some over there, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chief Torres, the next two items on the agenda is proclamation for Mental Health Month and National Police Week.
Chief, if you can present both items, and then we'll take individual pictures after.
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members and City Manager, this month is Mental Health Month, and I know that all of you always push for this particular, especially Councilwoman Jessica Ortega. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll start, I'm Chief Torres with the Mission Police Department. We have Ms. Laura here to my left, and we have officers from the police force and other members that are here with us today. And we'll start, whereas the area that someone lives in plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, and whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health, and whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and live full, productive lives, and whereas having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health, and whereas each business, school, governmental agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems, and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Month in the city, and call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, and invite the community to the City of Mission and E3 Hope Foundation Drive Out the Darkness Mental Health Awareness Event being held on May 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Mission Event Center, proclaimed on this 8th day of May, 2023.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The second proclamation is National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the members of the Mission Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Mission, Texas, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of the police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Now therefore, we the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as National Police Week, and call upon all citizens of Mission and upon all patriotic civic and education organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inviolable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, we the City Council and the City of Mission call upon all citizens of Mission, Texas, to observe Monday, May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Mission, Texas, to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives and/or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, proclaim on the 8th day of May, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Would you like to say a few words before, for the mental health?
Yes, actually I would. I'd like to thank the City of Mission, as well as Ms. Ortega, for always being our voice and welcoming us into the City of Mission. I do want to say to our PD... is always very respectful when there's mental health. But I think that also comes from the top and our leadership. And that trickles down to you on the field. So I want to thank city council as well as PD because you're approaching our community with a different light. And I think that shows hope and as Chief stated in the proclamation, where people live, they identify with their mental health. So I think it's really important that the city continue to strive to be that safe haven for those struggling. So I thank the City of Mission.
We as a council are working very hard and I also want to thank Councilwoman Jessica for being the voice in the council. And we all have different projects and they are all very important to us. But we feel like we were running behind in this particular area and we're trying to catch up. I know our money has been invested on our police department to do some training and unfortunately we need, gotta continue putting more money because it's very much needed. So thank you and on behalf of the council, we present this proclamation. So y'all want to come to the front?
We can do one, one group at a time, chief.
Okay.
See if they can get it right, Sam.
We can get it better.
Just under the weight.
It's going to work.
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 My report, but on May 10th, which is Wednesday, we do have the Business Smart Start webinar for anyone interested in starting a business, we will let you know where to start. On May 11th, which is this Thursday, we do have a ribbon cutting. We are celebrating the grand opening of the Club Car Wash. So we do invite anybody of our council to come and join us and thank them for doing business in Mission. On Thursday, May 11th, we do have the Eating a Prayer happening. We are promoting this to our business community and our social media pages, and it will be held at the Mission Event Center. On May 12th, we are participating and covering the event announcement of the UTRGV and MEDC partnership. So stay tuned, it will be a press conference, we're excited, and that will be on Friday at 11:00 a.m. We do have a Lunch and Learn scheduled happening on May 17th. It's open for all of our chamber members. We cover lunch. Anyone who's not a member is still able to attend, and there's a small fee for lunch, and the topic is on Texas Workforce Solution. We also have the Art of Marketing coming up on the 18th, and then the Small Business Resource Seminar, as well as another ribbon cutting with Brand Genius, which is another wonderful business that is doing business out of the seed building, so we're really excited about that. And lastly, we do have the Human Resources Process happening. So we do have several educational events happening, and save the date for our Buenas Estrellas luncheon, it's happening on August 12th, and our topic is higher education. So we have invited the presidents of UTRGV, South Texas College, and Texas A&amp;M to come and join us for a wonderful program. We're waiting to hear back from two, but we have confirmed the president of SDC. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mendiola, Keep Texas Beautiful affiliation.
Mr. Mendiola. He's outside.
Oh, and he brought a board member. Yay!
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sorry.
Okay.
Rough afternoon. We're here to bring you some great news for the City of Mission. We worked hard over a year to become an affiliate of Keep Texas Beautiful. Now we're an official affiliation of Keep Texas Beautiful, and as you've seen in our track trucks, we are Keep Mission Beautiful.
Awesome.
And we brought one of our board members, the rest couldn't make it, to bring you news that we're going to beautify Mission.
Great.
Right now, we're in a rough patch, I understand that, but by the guidance of our mayor and our council, we have some beautiful projects coming up to clean Mission, beautify Mission, and have some beautification throughout the City of Mission.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Also, with the help of Ms. Anais Chapin, we've been working on this for a whole year. So this is our sign.
Yay!
How we're displaying somewhere in our city.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's take a picture.
Ms. Salinas, you want to say some pre-words?
No, just as a community member, it's very exciting to see the City of Mission increase their beautification efforts, and I'm so proud to be here, I'm proud to be supporting this organization and this committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chapin?
I'm just very excited. We worked very hard for, it's been like a year, I think, since we went to the conference last year. So it's been like a long process, but we're excited to, you know, be bringing more projects to the city.
Thank you. Thank you for all your do.
Congratulations.
Okay. You all want to come so we can take a picture? Next item on the agenda is Mission Economic Development Corporation project updates. Mr. Teclo Garcia.
Hello, good afternoon. Mayor Protam, thank you very much for the welcome.
You're welcome.
City Council, Randy. It's good to be before you again. I'm here to, as the CEO of the Mission EDC, here to give you an update on some of the projects and so forth that we're going through. I have a little presentation as well, and so we'll go through. Okay, so this economic activity report, just take a couple of minutes here. Starting on this first page, just want to, just for context, let everybody know who we are. We're the Mission Economic Development Corporation, we're the Center for Education and Economic Development, we're the Mission Economic Development Authority, the Mission Education Development Foundation. We have about 13 people that work at the seed, and we have about a 55,000 square foot building, and we also have a food park, and then we have a business park, the Expressway Business Park on the Expressway. Those are basically the areas that we have. Mr. Pata. We're used to these slides here. So our board and MEDC team, as you can see there, is led by our board president, Richard Hernandez, and the board members, Deborah Cortova, of course, Mayor Garza, Estella Sines, Jose Vargas, Noel Salinas, who might be here, he was, that he's there, one of our board members is here. Ms. Salinas, thank you for being here, along with Carl Davis, that forms our board. You can see some of our staff members underneath there as well, that's just some of them, we have several more, we're in the middle of taking more photos of everyone, but we've been able to assemble a really good team, and we're really proud of working with them, and the board, and the board has provided a lot of vision and energy for us, so we're definitely happy to work with them as well, and I want to thank them for that. Just some of what we do, as you see these things coming on the screen, I'll go through them very quickly. We're here to attract opportunities for investment, we're here to create good-paying jobs, we're here to enhance the local workforce, we're here for local business retention and expansion, and also to impact the community through our programs. Some of the stuff that we do includes retail recruitment, commercial, attraction, industrial, and even government expansion, all in the name of jobs. Jobs are what we're doing here, that's the name of our game, but we're looking for jobs that pay a good wage, a living wage. And just to give you an idea, in the McAllen area, the MIT study tells us that a living wage for this area is $14.98 per hour. That is to keep a person out of poverty and to handle a spouse or one child. And so that's kind of what we're shooting for, it's not a requirement for us, but we'd like to get to that point. We also want to provide job training, upskilling certifications, and et cetera for the Mission area residents that need it. And we're working with the Texas Workforce Commission, we're working with several other parties, South Texas College included, and UTRGV in order to do that. One thing I'd like to mention about, that we're really doing our best to work with local businesses through our local business retention and expansion program. Sometimes the best candidate for an expansion or more jobs is a company that already exists and is in our city or in our area. So we're out there meeting with our local companies and trying to do our best to figure out how we can help them attain some sort of expansion. Our programs, at the very bottom, we have programs like the Ruby Red Competition, which we're going to launch a 2.0 version of it later this fall. We've got our Downtown Facade Improvement Program, and many others that impact the community directly, including some of the donations that we make to local groups. So all those are included, the things that we do. What we've done, well, I'll go over again very briefly, four areas of concentration, economic development, real estate, personnel, and the seed building. Some of you might remember this, Mr. Pata, you were here at this event with Rodco, which represented an excellent opportunity for us to get a huge investment and facility to our city. So academic development, interacting with it, in the last six months, six-plus months that I've been on the job, we've interacted, pardon me, with at least 40 firms and our projects. Some of the companies that we worked directly and signed up to do, let me push this forward, we're, as you can see here, it'll catch up with me in a minute, with our Brand Genius, Rodco, Techna, IHOP, an Italian restaurant, and many others. The, you know, bringing these companies to Mission or expanding them here is a lot of hard work, and one of the biggest challenges we had when we got here is that, under the previous administration, there were several deals that were passed, but the contracts and the performance agreements for those deals weren't executed. So when we got here, we had to start from scratch, and a lot of these deals that you see coming through, they were approved by the board, but we had to go back and write the agreements, and so that's taken some time. And we're catching up, I think we're getting through most of these now, after six months or so, but, and we've got more to come, but that's always tough when you're dealing with legal departments and outside lawyers and company lawyers and people who want, developers who want certain things, and getting the agreements done has been a challenge, but we're getting there. We're really proud of what we've done so far. We've launched, the next one on the list is we launched our business recruitment and retention program or expansion program for existing businesses. Again, our Business Development Director, Blanca Davila, has reached out to some of our key businesses so far. We plan to hit about three dozen this year, but we've met with Royal Technologies, we've met with Wonderful Citrus, we've met with several others just in the last several weeks, just to get, gauging them on what they would like to see and what they would like to do in the future. It's very important for us. We have gone out on the road as another thing to improve our opportunities. We've represented Mission at several conferences and shows, including the Site Selectress Conference, the National Site Selectress Conference in San Antonio, Viva Fresh, the biggest produce conference in the Southwest, in Dallas. Also, we've attended the Red River Retail Conference in Dallas. We plan to be at the ICSC later this month, and Retail Live in Austin later in the summer, and several others, such as with Border Trade Alliance and the Alliance for I-69. We've also met with the Bridge Director in McAllen. We've had a lot of key meetings in order to get us out there and raise our profile here, and then also to accomplish our mission. Lastly, that goes hand in hand with the digital marketing and brand enhancement and media that we've done. We've got a lot of earned media, we're enhancing our brand through what we're doing in our outreach, and then our digital marketing, we're leveraging all the social media platforms that we can to message to not only the other businesses, but also to our peers and our sector that Mission is a viable place, we're active, we're busy, and we have a lot of things going for us. So we're trying to leverage everything within our power to move us forward. The other sector we have is real estate. This one is very brief, but I'd just like to share that, again, in the last six months, we've been able to sell four of our lots, Lot 5 at the Event Center, Lot 3 at the Event Center, Lot 8A at the Event Center, and then Lot 1 in the old meter property in the Expressway Business Park. Additionally, we've been working with Victor here to reacquire the 88 acres, which we've done, and our plan is to sell that. We've got several potential candidates already waiting for that, and we can talk about that more some other time. We've also been working with the broker in marketing the properties that we have, and we've been doing that since day one. And so some of that, it looks like it's working, we'd like to move some more properties. We're closing another one at the Event Center, hope to hear from that by the end of next week. And then some of the ones in the Expressway Business Park are challenging to sell because of their location and access, but we're going to try to get through them and get more done. Very quickly, just to move forward here, this is just a picture page of our building, the seed building, and many of you obviously have been in there, and we can go, I can tell you what we've done. This is important because the seed is a big building, there's a lot to do there, we've got over 20 tenants, but what we've done is we've been able to recruit seven full-time paying tenants. We recruited Brand Genius, a digital strategic marketing firm that brought 11 new jobs to Mission and moved into the seed. They are also building apps with some of their staff, they're hiring up right now, and we have a strategic marketing alliance with them. They help us with some of our marketing, they've built videos, flyers, and other things for us. Higher Ed, really proud of this. We worked with the mayor and city manager and others to bring UTRGV, its Small Business Development Center, to the building. We have, in fact, just to let everybody know, everyone's invited, 11:00 a.m. on Friday is we have a ribbon cutting for UTRGV and the seed building. So we're super proud to have them in. We've also been able to recruit Wayland Baptist University, and we just had their ribbon cutting a few days ago. Texas Women's University has opened up an outreach center in the seed building, and then South Texas College is conducting a class at the seed building. So all this is really for the Mission residents to try to enhance, you know, their learning and their skills and their skill sets. Okay, we've also created some efficiencies in the administration, we've reorganized how we take payments and how we monitor our tenants, and then we've also initiated an energy-saving program to reduce our electric bill and how we use energy. Okay, and we go to, I think, the second-to-last page here. New personnel, when I arrived back in October, we had seven openings at the seed. At one point, I think we were down to four people or maybe three, but we've been able to hire up some really key folks, Economic Development Director, a Financial Officer, a Marketing Communications Director, Programs and Partnerships Director, and also some very key and very sharp administrative staffers. That has really put us on the foot forward, and we just finished up the hiring process about two weeks ago, so really happy with that, we think we're really making a lot of gains there. Mayor Protam, that concludes my report on just some of the happenings at the seed and the Mission EDC. We hope we can come back and give you another report later, but right now, really happy with the work we're doing, it's not enough, we need to do more, and that's going to be our goal going forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Teclo?
No questions.
Thank you very much. I know you've just been pretty busy, there's a lot, it's been a lot of ribbon cutting, groundbreaking, so there's a lot of great things happening in our community.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pata, and thank you to the council for your support. Mayor's not here, but thanks, Mayor and Randy, thank you for your partnership here, we really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Pata.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is departmental reports, they are new packages.
Move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve our departmental reports, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next item, citizens' participation.
Yes, Mayor Protam, I've got about five people that have signed up. The first one is Mr. Richard Bell.
Good afternoon, please state your name and address.
Still afternoon?
Yes.
Well, y'all have been busy. My name is Richard Bell, and I'm a newcomer to Mission, Texas. Born and raised in Texas, lived all my life within a hundred-mile radius of Dallas, Texas. We like Mission, I live in Aladdin Villas, which is on Stewart Road, and has about 550 homes that we own there. It's not an RV park, or it's not anything else, it's just a community. I want to talk to you about two items that concerns us, and should concern the city. One is the idea that you might want to lower the standards of our parking ordinance that we currently have. I can speak from some experience, I've served on the zoning board, Board of Equalization, tax, and also City Commissioner in the Dallas area. I've never seen, anytime you lower standards, improve the city. I think if anything, you should always raise standards. If you want to lower the value of property in a community, say, "Park your cars wherever you want to, all over the yard," and it's okay. Well, it's not okay in that it lowers the value of that community. Talk to any appraiser, any real estate person, they'll tell you the same thing, so I don't know why you might want to do that. That is a question, and I did, talking to the code enforcement people, they said they've been asked to hold off on pursuing it. I can't believe they would do that, since the ordinance is still on the books while we enforce it. It made no sense to me, so I felt it was important enough, just out of love for the city, that I speak to you about it and my experiences that I do have, I'm older, I think, than any of you here, so therefore I've seen a lot in Dallas, Texas, I graduated high school there, lived all my life. Good things bring good things, and if you have a parking problem in a residential community, you might look at some of your other ordinances, in that you might not have single-family dwellings there, as is the code for that development. You have many families living in it, which creates more cars, which creates more congestion. So I would like to see you really consider keeping our standards high. The next thing, and the last thing, I'll be as brief as I can.
Mr. Bell, your three minutes have expired, if you want to summarize it, you may.
Oh, I didn't know I was on a three-minute kick. I do need to talk to you about Stewart Road, and if I can, since that's another topic, hopefully do it in three minutes, if that's okay.
It's up to the mayor and council, if they want to extend that time or not.
Can you do another minute?
Yeah, I can do as vast as I can speak. I'm a Texan, so naturally I speak slow. Stewart Road goes right through the middle of my community. There's 550 homes in Aladdin Villas, and about 250 on each side, Stewart Road goes right through the middle. It has 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, flashing yellow lights both ends between Business 83 and I-2, and we have one crossing, we go back and forth, old people, it's 55-plus community. So speeds run anywhere from 35 to probably 95. That is really extreme. Your city manager, assistant city manager worked with me, he put a ghost car out there, meaning nobody in it, and you've never heard so many tires sliding and things happening in your life. They just got out of Sunday School. So, but that lasted about three or four days, then figured out, I see some of them stop and they look, ah, nobody there, so it picked right back up. I personally have been running off the road, they pass, and the whole thing is no passing zone, but yet they pass constantly, and it's very dangerous. Somebody's going to get killed, we cross by walking, bicycles, golf carts, cars, even wheelchairs, go back and forth from side to side, and it's a very dangerous situation. I called the police department, explained it, no answers, waited a month, called again, no answers, so I said, "Well, the phone doesn't work, so I will go personally for a personal interview." They wouldn't see me, but they did take a report at the desk. That's when I went to the city manager's office and did get some response, but nothing has happened. We have motorcycles that even your own people stated when we got these new motorcycles, "Well, we're going to crank down on speed,"
Mr. Bell.
"and irresponsible drivers, we hadn't done it."
Your time is up, but I would have for you to meet with the chief?
I'd love to meet him.
He's right here waiting for you.
Well, you see, he missed his golden opportunity, he could have already had all this information, but his people never shielded him, and I don't get contacted.
I apologize for that, Mr. Bell, but Chief Torres will be meeting with you right now.
If I'd known it was three minutes, I would practice this.
Yeah, it's okay.
Next time, sir.
He'll be, he's waiting for you.
Welcome to Mission, and thank you for picking Mission.
Now, if I'm in jail, any of you bail bondsmen?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir. We have Jim Barnes, he wants to speak regarding Item 28 on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Jim Barnes, I'm an objector watcher of the legal system, and I live in Mission. I have some questions about Item 28, authorizing the submittal of a hiring program grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. Everything from the government lately has had strings attached, so I'm concerned, what strings are attached to this? Is there going to be a requirement for a quota for transgender police officers? Any police officer, whatever their orientation, that can pass the test that you established should be a police officer, but there should be no quotas. Are they going to require all-electric police cars? That could be a problem at 3:00 a.m. The gas stations are still open, but the charging station doesn't have the sun to Are the firearms going to be required to be biometric, which means if an officer goes down, no one can pick up his gun and defend him or end the threat, because he can't shoot the gun? Are there going to be backs and mask requirements? That should be determined by Texas and us, not the federal government. Is there anything in it about an ESG score? Because if there is, they can control everything about the city, control credit, control insurance, control a lot of things that we probably haven't even become aware of yet. Does it say anything about the New World Order or the World Economic Forum? Because if it does, we ought to keep our hands off of it. I hope you have read the fine print very carefully, because otherwise we could be saddled with restrictions and requirements that we have no idea how to meet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. On Zoom, we have Mr. Golden Olunka. Yes, sir, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, you've got three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Golden Olunka, and I live in Mission, Texas. I moved from Maryland after retirement, so my wife practices in the hospital here, the heart hospital. But the concern I have, I live in Stewart Road, my address is 1405 South Stewart Road. Just like the first speaker spoke, it's all about traffic, speed limit, nobody respects it on this side, on the south side of the Stewart Road. There's no speed limit, actually, so everybody comes up from the... So everybody comes up from the east front edge way, gets on Stewart Road, and they just speed through Trinity. When they come to Trinity, they barely stop and they'll just keep going. At the end of my Stewart Road is a close community, a GED community called the Woods. And I don't care. I mean, I live right in the middle of the Stewart Road, between Trinity and the Woods. So my building is the only one with the two stories and the American flag on it. I have tried to reach the police chief since one year. I have gone to the police offices. I've called several times. He's in the meeting. He'll call you back. What's your name? What's your number? It's been a year, since February last year. I have even stopped some police patrol vehicles and begged them to please clock the speed. People make up to 100 miles an hour, broke on the Chevrolet, used this street for test driving. They get to the end of the GED community, they turn around and they will speed down through. I'm a disabled veteran. I use my tricycle sometime for exercise and sometimes, I mean, I'm afraid of going outside. I have twin daughters that are six years old. They can't even go out to play. And people are on their phone all the time. It seems like they're driver of their community. They're looking on their phone, updating their status. They don't even look. There was a time my kids were playing outside in the front and the ball rolled out to the road. You know that this guy didn't even see the ball. What if he was a kid? He ran over the ball and kept going. If he was my child, that they ran over, they wouldn't have known. So I'm very, very sad that I've made every effort to reach the police chief and he never, never even returned one single call for one year. It is, it is sad. It is bad. The police chief is, the chief Torres.
Sir, this is, sir, this is the city attorney. Your time has expired. Thank you.
We all have.
Ms. Anna, do you have his number?
Yes, sir. If you could please put me your phone number. My name is Anna Carrillo on the chat and I can have someone reach out to you. But if you can, please give me your phone number on the chat. Next, we have Mr. Luis Quintanilla.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I have some good news from the shelter, from the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society here at Mission. We moved in on February 8th, so today marks three months, I believe. I got my calendar right. Sometimes I don't even know what day it is. So I wanted to give some updates and dispel some myths and answer any questions that the city council may have. So just a broad view right now. I'm so sorry, silencing my notifications. Since we moved in, we have taken almost 700 animals from the city of Mission. It's been 699 as of the end of April. We received 76 just this first week of May. And that was mostly dogs, some cats. So we're getting inundated with animals weekly. I think there's some misinformation out there talking about how we are not taking in animals or that we may not be receiving anything from the public. On that track with 76 a week, that's our latest data, we're going to be on track to getting over 3,500 animals this year, which is exactly the target range that we were shooting for from the beginning. One thing I wanted to make sure to highlight are our adoption numbers. Since we moved in to the Mission Shelter, we have processed over 112 adoptions. That may not seem significant in a vacuum, but as a comparison, in January, the month prior to us moving in, there was a grand total of one adoption performed at the shelter. The following month, when we moved in, it went up to 18, then to 47 in March, and then 47 in April. With animals returned to owner, that number is a total of 59, averaging anywhere from 17 to 27 per month. And animals rescued to outside organizations, in January before we moved in, it was 44. And as of April, we jumped that number up to 75. So live outcomes are very, very healthy. And for spay neuter surgeries, we have done over 112 just for Mission animals alone. And again, that's up from zero in January. Euthanasia, zero animals have been killed for space. Our main objective, thank you. So our main objective of the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society, both at Harlingen and in Mission, is to end the killing for space of perfectly healthy, adoptable animals. That's our primary function. And we succeeded on the first day of arrival. We have not had to euthanize a single animal for space. So we're kind of overachieving along with our city partners. We finished that and accomplished that goal 89 days ahead of schedule. So one of the main things I want to address are the concerns that, you know, euthanasia still happens. How can you be a no-kill shelter and have euthanasia still happen? But I want to make it very clear that we do not euthanize for space. Every single animal is accounted for. Every single cat and dog is accounted for. Our database is viewable by the city and every single animal is visible immediately upon arrival. So we unfortunately have a lot of distemper in Hidalgo County.
Mr. Quintanilla, if I can pause you real quick. Mayor and council, you can extend the three minutes if you like, but I just have to notify them the three minutes are over.
Mayor Protem, I just would like, because I have a lot of questions and comments, but because it's public comments, I can't. And so I'm wondering, Mr. Perez, if you can meet with the mayor and see if we can add if Mr. Gutierrez, Mr. Luis would like to give us like a monthly report on a monthly basis. And so you could be at the top of the agenda and you can have a beautiful presentation the way you had today.
Sure.
And then we could ask and answer questions.
Yes, ma'am. I did meet with Mr. Quintanilla and so we will be scheduling them to do monthly updates.
Oh, great.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem and council, the board may, I guess, lift the restrictions on having questions or having those questions answered, but it would have to be a motion by the entire board. So if there's any specific question you want answered today, you may do that. It would just be a vote of the board to continue with that.
Any questions? But I like the recommendation by Councilwoman Jessica. You can just put it maybe next to me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dendi Abay.
Hello?
Hi, Dendi. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, city manager and council members. First, I would like to thank the city leadership for stepping up and improving the welfare of our local animals by choosing the RGV Humane Society. Today does mark the 90th day, and although they inherited many challenges and are still coming under fire from outside sources, they are consistently taking care of the animals and following protocol. As a lifelong resident of the city of Mission, this difference is not only noticeable, it has been a true game changer and very impactful. Unfortunately, the city still has the same problem it has always had, and that is overpopulation, very common in our valley communities. The fact that animals are not picked up consistently is a challenge that is not new. The city must provide more support to the shelter in providing accurate information to the public as this is a team approach. So much information has been put out against the shelter, and I would ask the city to showcase the difference this group has made. Clearly, the numbers, as Luis mentioned, speak for themselves. And I personally have been working at the shelter for over a year as a volunteer, boots on the ground. The difference is incredible. I invite you to each go out and I invite our community as well. Animals are vaccinated properly, scanned at intake, evaluated for injuries if needed. And the community will soon see the benefit of the spay and neutering on a weekly basis in our community. As you just heard, the numbers are outstanding that we've never had those services. Now they're currently doing continuous vaccine clinics as well. While others may argue over the semantics of the word no-kill shelter, I can verify that this group has cleaned up the shelter and gone over and beyond to provide good quality care for these animals. The return rate is up and the opportunity for the public to come in and foster and adopt is available. Many may argue about the current status. However, I can attest that the system of letting the public know about the animals that are available with updated information does work. While others would prefer to have the old system where the public was never notified, records were not consistent, and we had a very high killed number. My question is, would others prefer that? I would ask for those same people bringing this out on social media to come up with solutions for the city to help this process and progress. There must be a middle ground, and I ask that the city put out a consistent message of transparency on the numbers and the conditions at the shelter, as these people should be commended for their efforts. Let's work together to build a greater community by showing support and public transparency and refute erroneous claims that are currently everywhere. The facts speak loud and clear, and I ask that this leadership present a campaign that supports the true efforts of our fine shelter and look for solutions to our growing need for space. And I thank you all.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anna. Now we're going to public hearings with the first item on the agenda, number 11. Ms. Deluna?
Mr. Plata, did you want to address number 17 first? You can do that if you'd like.
On number 17, the applicant will be requesting to table the item until we have a fully city council present. But is there anybody in the audience that was here for that item? Do you all want to speak now or you all want to wait? Are we going to be table the item to next meeting? But if you all want to come speak, I mean, it will be the next city council meeting. We will make sure the notices are sent again.
Allow them to speak now.
It would be made at 22nd at quarter.
But if you all want to speak, I mean, or you all want to wait till then, or you all wait? If the rest of the people want to wait or they want to speak? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
You would have, can you come to?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
And public. Maria Sterpeña Salinas, 715 Miller, Mission, one of my addresses. I just have a concern because I've been coming for another item and the young man who is asking for that permit said that, he said he admitted that he was already selling. So he said, well, I'm going to just tell you all that I'm already, you know, selling parts. And so I was kind of confused. He's asking for a permit, but he said he was already selling. And with all the tragedies going on right now, that just didn't make sense to me. You're asking for a permit and you're already selling parts. So that's a concern I have as an ex-teacher and educator and a taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please state your name and your address.
David Baleras, 3106 Granite Drive. Yes, sir. My name is David. I am applying for an FFL license, which stands for Federal Farms License. There are people who have the same license I'm applying for close by my house. You have one on Mimosa behind Stripes, and you have one in the neighborhood called Monaco. They each have an FFL license which I am applying for. I've already applied with ATF. I'm approved. All I have to do is get a permit from you guys. Aside of that, yes, I sell parts, but just parts. But if you know, the only way with how an FFL works is that parts, certain parts have serial numbers and you have to get, you have to get an FFL license to sell certain parts. So yes, I do sell parts, but just with what I can with a tax ID, which is legal. But I do everything proper. I send everything proper. You know what I mean? I go to the trade shows, go to little meetups and sell legally. I mean, I don't go sell to like, I mean illegally. I do everything online on GunBroker. If you go to GunBroker, there's a website that tells you all the local FFLs nearby. In order for you to ship a firearm to someone else, you have to have an FFL license. It can't just be to a normal civilian without a license. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, just ma'am?
Good afternoon. I'm Nancy Lawheed. I live at 3105 Stonegate subdivision in Mission. And he lives at 3106, right across the street. And he's requesting a conditional use permit for home occupation sale of firearms. We presented a petition with 69 signatures of the homeowners. 10 of those signatures, which is 100%, is within that 200-foot radius perimeter that you give us. That's 100% of the people around there. If I was going to be doing a business and trying to get a home business going, and I had that kind of opposition, I guess I would pause and I would consider another option. One of the homeowners that signed is in those, is in that perimeter. She's a realtor. She brought a list of available retail places, and some of them are quite economical. They say they want to only do it for one year at the home, and then they're going to go get one. There's no guarantee. We don't want a gun shop because the people, they order their stuff online and then they go and they have to go and pick it up in person at 3106 Granite Drive. His driveway is on Two Mile. That doesn't matter. UPS, FedEx, everybody comes and delivers to 3106 Granite Drive. He is part of our subdivision and we have one inlet, one outlet, no through traffic. And we want to keep it that way. We really do. The whole process of the customer coming to his place to pick it up in person, which it must be, they leave with possession of a firearm. That's what we're trying to stop. That's the activity we're not comfortable with at all. And we have, I hope you got a copy of the petition because it speaks volumes, the people. We had one neighbor that said, I don't think so. But his wife really did oppose it. So they didn't sign. One of those that we reached out to with the petition. I don't know what more we can do. We pay taxes. We care. And we bought our homes in a residential area. We never thought a gun shop would open up across the street. I don't care if it's internet sales or whatever. I know he has inventory. Inventory in a retail word is merchandise for purchase. Okay? That's all I have to say. We do not want this to go through.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Alejandro Vito Flores. My address is 11210 West Ginnahav Mall Road. I currently work for Danny's Pawn and Sporting Goods and Point Blank Shooting Range. Now, the process of ordering parts is not illegal. The only thing that you need to have to have shipped to an FFL dealer that has been approved by the ATF and of course, if you guys get your approval, are lower receivers and serialized parts. Anything else is perfectly legal. Now, there is facts here that are certain skews. And of course, in our today's climate, it is very, a very touchy subject. I understand. I have myself have been victim of gun violence and I am a gun owner. I mean, I work at a gun store, excuse me. Now, everything that I have seen in my employment, anytime you need to have a FFL transfer, needs to be shipped to a FFL dealer. And it does not matter if it's a home-based FFL or a commercial FFL, as long as the person does have an FFL license approved by ATF. That is the only That is the only way you can get your hands on a serialized part. Anything else, it's... However it is, now, I understand some people might feel uncomfortable, and it's understandable. And as a nation, we have to discuss certain uncomfortable topics. But as a son of a small business owner, I understand the difficulties of starting a business. Now, I have personally spoken to home-based FFLs in my job, because that is part of my job description, where I need to sell... Send our FFL information to that person. Now, everything is very difficult. Everything is very by-the-book, and it's never been skewed. As far as to my knowledge, every gun owner, every gun store does everything by the book, because ATF is incredibly, incredibly observious of what these businesses do. And most of these home-based FFLs, yes, they do start at the home, but eventually, they go and apply to... For their business to become a commercial. And it's just a process that every person that does so often, but nobody speaks about it. Now, I understand a city, you want to keep your citizens safe, you also want to promote business. This is one of those things that you have to go through the process and let it grow. Because there is certain gun shops in other areas of the state...
Sir, thank you for your time. Your three minutes has expired.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Albert Valderas. David is my son. Now, he wants to start this business. Now, UPS, FedEx, they don't have to deliver in the back. If I put a sign up there, maybe, hey, go up to my main entrance. Our main entrance is Mile 2 in Sherry. That's the only house that faces out of the subdivision. Now, this is not going to be a high volume, that you're going to see tons of trucks coming in there, because there are not going to be that many sales, you know? Another thing, if he were to sell the firearm or anything, that person doesn't have to come to the residence to pick up. As an ATF dealer, he can go and deliver to the person buying anything at their premise, at their home or whatever. It doesn't have to be done there. Now, there'll be no signs. There'll be no inventory at the house. So, you know, I don't think we're going to have high traffic there. He's starting off. It won't be like you're going to have teagarete cars driving in and out. You know, we were against teagarete, too. We're against Stripes, and we're going to have traffic there. Everybody receives packages at UPS, since you buy Amazon, and everybody delivers, buys stuff online. It doesn't have to be parts or firearms. And like I tell you about firearms, they don't have to be... Paperwork doesn't have to be done there at our premises. And he can also refuse service to anyone on his own judgment of who's buying what. That's another thing that he should be, you know, will be doing. So... And he wants to start off. Eventually, maybe it won't work. So, you know, let's give him a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
I'm Dean Lawheed, 3105 Granite Drive. I live right across the street. We've seen a lot of stuff go on. We don't want the gun violence in our neighborhood. It's happening all over the country. We want to stop it. I have four guns a lot, but I...
You want to get closer to the mic, sir?
I don't want people coming in, picking up the guns, and walking out. And that's what he said would happen, if there's somebody locally buying it. You guys put a six-month halt where you can't have anybody come in, who's going to regulate it? Who's going to verify that's happening? It just... There's just been so much stuff going on. I don't want it to happen in our neighborhood. We took the letter on to everybody in our neighborhood. I made them read it. We had written up a petition. I made them read it before they signed it, and everybody was against it. I think that's a good thing that you guys need to listen to. Everybody in our neighborhood was against selling it, except for that one person. We need to stop it. If he wants to do a firearm sale, start a business. Do it the proper way. You don't regulate a lot of... You stop... I've heard you've stopped other people wanting to open up a business in their home. You could stop this one, too. And everybody in our neighborhood was against it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have tabled this item, and...
You still need a motion in a second.
Okay, we're going to...
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and table this item, because our mayor and our fellow council member will be here at next meeting, so we can fully discuss it.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to table the item for our next meeting. We'll make sure the notices go out to the citizens again. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. An item has been tabled for next meeting. Going back to the agenda, number 11.
Item number 11 is a rezoning for the south 5.4 acres of Lot 38, Bellwoods Company Subdivision C. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to R2 duplex fourplex. The applicant is Raymundo Patricio Platas Merino. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance, will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 625 feet north of West Mile 2 Road on the west side of Compton Drive. Surrounding zones include agricultural to all directions. Existing land uses, they're all vacant, inclusive of the site. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The applicant's original application was for R3, which is multifamily residential. However, it was discovered during the last PNC that his intention was to develop a duplex fourplex, which is actually an R2, a lesser dense than what its original application was. Staff notes that the proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. There has been no development in this area since it was annexed back in June 6 of 2009. There was public opposition for their original proposal, and the concerns voiced during that hearing were that they didn't want apartments in that area. PNC and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? Yes, a clarification while she gets to the podium, but Mr. Platas Merino is not related to me.
Good afternoon again, council and public. Maria Sterpeña Salinas, and I'm against it. I own three acres in the Compton Drive, 3318 North Compton Drive. Now, Compton Drive is a historical drive, and it was named after an American hero, not a local hero, John Compton, one of the few pilots who made it into Pearl Harbor while it was being bombed. He was an American hero. Mr. Compton and my dad were friends, but they loved the orchards, and they loved... They wanted to make it to where the community could love agriculture. And now, Mr. Compton has passed, and so has my daddy. However, I'm against it, because it's only a 12-foot road. That 12-foot road, I had personally asked the ex-city manager, so they built a 12-foot black road. It was supposed to be a public drive-through. For some reason, they dead-ended it. So, I do not want a historical drive to turn into a slum. There's no passing zone. It's a dead end. It's lacking infrastructure, like water, sewage lines. So, Mr. Platas went and said that he was going to make it 35 feet. He didn't even know the measurements. And then he said, "35 feet, he was going to put all the sewer lines, water lines, and then the city was going to reimburse him." So, I was kind of, how is the city going to reimburse you if I've been asking the city, hey, they built water lines? Because my lines were actually stolen. So, the ex-city manager, they built certain water lines. So, I was saying, how is the city going to reimburse you? And then he said, "Oh, they're going to reimburse me." Then, there are two schools there, and it's high traffic. It's going to be a hazard. You're going to talk about a lot of traffic. He never talked about any kind of in-and-out or appropriate traffic lights. He also stated that he talked to my brother, Robert Benya, who is bedridden, and my brother has dementia. My brother does not own property there anymore. He doesn't own. And he said that my brother was 100% with him. And he also used another neighbor. He said, "Oh, the other neighbor's 100% with him, with him, too." I said, "Sir, I can go with an R1. We can go with beautiful homes with swimming pools, beautiful." No. He wanted, what, 40, 40 duplexes and apartments? So, then you multiply 40 times four cars, you're talking about 160 cars and all the traffic. So, I'm sorry, I'm against it, and I really, really, really would appreciate at this time you denying him. Thank you so much, and thank you for the hard work you do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request?
Yes, sir. We have the applicant on Zoom.
Hi, may I speak?
Yes, Mr. Platas.
Hi. Thank you very much to all the members of the city council, to the staff members, to the neighbors, and to Ms. Ster that just spoke. And thanks for the chance to let me talk. I represent Silver Estates Developments, and what we want to do is, yes, we want to invest in Mission, and we want to bring a new subdivision, yes, in that area where you saw it. And... But we don't want to bend, and we don't want to pass over the neighbors. No one want to do that. So... But there is opportunity for another neighbors, just like Gilberto Gutierrez subdivision, which is across the street, and Amber Grove, which is in the back of us. It's... Those both are subdivision for apartments, as I aware, and the staff mentioned to me. Now, about the neighbors, yes, I spoke to Mr. Aronboli, to Ms. Salinas, to Ms. Sanchez, and Mr. Gonzalez. I didn't spoke to the brother of Ms. Ster, but I would like to talk to him if possible. Now, we are here to invest, to make an impact in the economic activity, just as Teclo Garcia mentioned, in the Economic Development Corporation. We are here to invest, to create jobs, to retention of the business, just as the Economic Development mentioned. So, let us make an impact. Also, I was mentioned that there is an investment to be made. Yes, we want to invest in that area, and the investment is going to be approximately $8 million. That's a good investment for Mission. It's going to bring you jobs. And also, talking to the rest of the neighbors that I just mentioned, I did talk to them, and they are not opposing to this investment. By the way, couple of them would like to make an R2 submitting, as they told me, but I don't know if they are going to. We are trying to do the investment. Now, that area will be developed with the neighbors. The investment in the area will reach easily in the future $30 million in the next three years. That will come... That will bring taxes for the police, car, for education, for whatever is needed in Mission. So, one of the neighbors mentioned that good things bring good things. We want to bring good things to the area. That's all we want to do. We are willing to invest to bring the sewer to the area if needed. We already made a due diligence. We want to bring the lines of water if needed, and we want to bring the lines of a storm and also widen the street, Compton Street, if necessary. We're willing to do all this investment, because we believe in Mission, and we want to be part of it.
Mr. Platas, I'm sorry. Your time has expired.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? May I have a motion to close the public hearing? We've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have closed the public hearing. Any questions or comments from our council?
I'll make a motion to deny.
We've got a motion and a second to deny. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 12.
Item number 12 is a rezoning for a tract of land, being the south 7.8 acres, and the north 103.8 acres, of a certain 203.8 acres of tract, tract of land known as the Fernandes Strip out of Porción 52. This is from PUD Plan Unit Development to R2 duplex fourplex. The applicant is M2 Engineering, PLLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance, will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 1,700 feet south of Mile 1 South Road on the west side of Inspiration Road. Surrounding zones include Plan Unit Development to all directions. Existing land uses includes single-family residential to the north. To the east is Metal Creek Country Club. To the west and south, it's currently vacant. The site currently has a single-family residential. The future land use map shows this area's low-density residential. The applicant's original application was for R3 as well, multifamily. However, it was discovered during the last PNC that his intentions was to also develop a duplex fourplex, which is a lesser dense than what his original application. The proposed zone does not comply with city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Staff recommendation was for denial. However, planning and zoning approved the request this day. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request?
Good evening. My name is Milos Salinas, and our office is located at 1810 East Griffin Parkway. This property here is approximately a third of a mile south of... South Mile 1 and Inspiration. And across the street, you have Metal Creek, which is Planning Unit Development at existing... The existing zoning at this property is also a PUD, which is basically a mixed use of residential. This is located in a collector road. Inspiration is being proposed to get widened to a four-lane road with a turning lane from Military to the Expressway. Along Inspiration, there's over 50 properties that are already duplex, fourplex, and multifamily from Military to Mile 3. We do have a rendering of what's being proposed. What's being proposed right now is 20 fourplex lots. It will have an HOA, and this is where the property is located, going north at the corner. This is a third of a mile. All of this is already multifamily. If you continue going north, this is on Inspiration. This is also multifamily. And if you continue from Expressway to Griffin Parkway, you have duplex and fourplex all along Inspiration. And we brought basically all the way to Mile 3, just to kind of identify that. Inspiration is a collector street and has duplex and fourplex and multifamily throughout Inspiration. I understand that this is Mile 2 to Mile 3. All of this is duplex, fourplex. And I understand that one of the tools that the planning department goes by is the future land use map, but it is a map that is over 12 years old. Inspiration maybe wasn't being proposed to get widened then, but it is now. And so, I think it would be a good project. There's a park just south of there, a school just west of there. It's surrounded by... Across the street, you have an... It's surrounded by, across the street, you have an RV park, residential, townhomes, apartments. It's a mixed use. I think it fits the criteria, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Milo, can I please see the first?
The facade?
The rendering of how the building's gonna look?
And there's gonna be twenty of those, right?
Twenty.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close it.
We got a motion. We got a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Second. All those in favor say aye to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Okay, any questions or?
So, Ms. Deluna, planning and zoning denied the request?
Approved.
No, staff was recommending denial based on, of course, the future land use map.
Oh, okay.
But planning and zoning approved the request.
Approved it.
Yes.
Okay. But we've talked about this issue before, that sometimes our future, we need to go over it. I know we've gone through it several times, but I know you all are doing your due diligence by following, you know, the maps that we set forth, but I think it's time that area needs to grow. And so, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve.
We got a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the rezoning from, I got lost, but a checkled leg being south seven point eight acres of, one oh three acres of the certain land from PUD to duplex, duplex, fourplex residential. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, that would be ordinance number fifty-three oh five.
Fifty-three oh five. Thank you. Number thirteen?
Number thirteen is a conditional use permit for a guest house on property zone R1, single-family residential. This is at twenty-three oh four West Palm Circle. This would be out of Lot Forty-eight, Palm Acres Number Two Subdivision. It's currently sold, single-family residential, and the applicant is Joshua Smith. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately one hundred and forty-four feet north of Griffin Parkway along the east side of West Palm Circle. Their request before the board is to allow an existing storage shed to be converted into a guest room. The lot measures seventy-two by one thirty-eight for a total of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet. Guest homes are allowed under a single-family residential code as long as they apply for conditional use permit and as long as they comply with the following conditions. One of them is the lot needs to be a minimum of twelve thousand square feet. It cannot be made available for lease, rent, hire, and the owner of such use may not receive remuneration for the use of one of the above. Proposal must be clearly secondary to the primary residence. It shall have no access to public street and shall have no separate kitchen areas or utilities. All building setbacks are being met. The driveway is more than sufficient to accommodate any incoming vehicle. The applicant is not proposing to have any separate utilities. Staff mailed out nineteen notices to property owners within two hundred feet. Staff has not received any comments in favor or against the request. Staff's recommendation is approval, subject to the applicant must comply with all the provisions outlined in Section one fifty-four dash four of the zoning code, except for the minimum lot size requirement. The unit may not have a separate kitchen or separate utilities, transferability to future owners imposing same conditions, not to be used for rental purposes, and waiving the minimum lot size requirement from the twelve thousand square feet. PNC and staff recommended approval. On October twenty-six, two thousand and five, PNC approved a similar request where, in that particular case, the lot was not meeting also the minimum lot size, and staff recommended approval on that. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? Come inside, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Schmidt. I'm at twenty-three oh four West Palm Circle. The reason we wanted to, or the reason we, I guess, got to this point is we're looking to put a tub in the room. My wife has recently diagnosed with fibromyalgia with different ailments in her body that she needs that type of treatment. In our room, we have a shower. So we've been showering for fifteen, sixteen years in this home. And, you know, with all the, the pain and the, you know, the trouble that she's been going through, I figured, you know, this, this, the building's just been sitting there, you know, with the storage, and I say, you know, let's transition into something that's more effective for, to gain something out of it and to kind of grow older. You know, we all, you know, we go through ailments, we go through pains. So it's nice to sit in a tub, and usually the only time we get to sit in one is we're going to a hotel. And it's not quite as nice as, as, you know, the one that we purchased, 'cause we thought we were already moving forward. So that's really the main purpose of that, is that we have that outdoor space for her and myself, you know, as, as I'm starting to get some pains. But nevertheless, you know, we've got a jetted tub and ready to rock and roll, but it's for personal use. I also have my son that, that is, also does work out there in the, in the home, and instead of him walking in and out of the house multiple times in the day. Originally, I wanted just to put the toilet and the sink, but that's where I, I say, you know, we're gonna have plumbing there, might as well do the whole thing, do it one time and be done with it. So no other intentions with the property. I've talked to a couple of the neighbors. Originally, I was gonna request for some of the neighbors to get it petitioned or signed, but once I found out that the city had already distributed mailers to them, and I talked to them about what it was, the intended use for it, there's no issues with, you know, with the neighbors, I figured it was no point in getting any kind of petition. So hopefully, we can move forward with that and, and kind of get that going.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? May I have a motion to close the public?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any questions, sir?
So, Ms. Deluna, the original, what was presented to planning and zoning was everything he was saying right now?
Yes. The, the idea of becoming a guest home is because he wants to have a shower, a complete tub, so it can be easily converted into a rental property. This would be the only way that he would be able to, to have what he's proposing, to go through the request, and we will be able to monitor.
Due to the family circumstance, I go ahead and vote for approval of this request?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to approve the request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What's the ordinance number?
Fifty-three oh eight. Um, fifty-three oh six, sorry. I'm looking at the other one.
Okay. Number fourteen?
On number fourteen, we got a request from the applicant if we could table the item. Table the item due to a death in the family. He's not able to attend, so he's asking if we could table it.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number fifteen?
Item number fifteen is a conditional use permit for a home occupation. This is for pet grooming styling at thirty-one oh five Melody Lane. This would be out of Lot Three Johnson City Subdivision. The property is currently sold, single-family residential, and the applicant is Salvador Regalado. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately two hundred and seven feet south of East Mile, Mile Two Road along the east side of Melody Lane. The applicant has a single-family residence thereon with a paved driveway off of Melody Lane. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit for a home occupation. He proposes to utilize his dining room garage and back patio for his business. Days and hours of operation proposed are Monday to Saturday from eight AM to five PM by appointment only. The applicant is the only employee. For parking, it is noted that the driveway can easily accommodate up to four vehicles. Staff note that a code enforcement division has an ongoing case because the applicant had been running the pet grooming business out of his residence since January. The applicant was advised to cease operations and go through the conditional use permit. Staff mailed out twenty notices to surrounding property owners within two-hundred-foot radius. Staff has received several calls in opposition to their request. The concerns voiced are in regards to increased traffic, humane condition of the animals. Business should be in a commercial area. Property needs to be kept. Staff notes that the city has approved two other home occupations for temp grooming, for pet grooming back in the nineties, but in those cases, there was no opposition from the residents. Staff has made visits to those home occupations, but they're no longer in business. So staff is recommending denial. PNC and staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? Okay, may I have a motion to close the public?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I second it.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, any questions, comments?
I did receive a phone call from a resident that lives in that area. She was gonna be on vacation. And so I would like to go ahead and go with the denial of both staff and PNC for this request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to deny the request as recommended by planning and zoning and staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number sixteen?
Item number sixteen is a conditional use permit for the sale and anti-consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Olive Garden at fourteen oh five East Expressway D3. This would be out of lots two and three New Quest Subdivision. It's currently zoned commercial, and the applicant is Olive Garden LLC in care of Leanne Calderon. If the council is inclined to approve this item, I would need an adoption of an ordinance for the CUP and for the wet zone. The subject site is located approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet east of Bryant and Expressway D3, along the north side of the Expressway. The applicant is proposing to construct a seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square foot building for the Olive Garden. They would like to offer the sale of alcohol with their meals. Olive Garden is the largest company for casual full-service Italian restaurant in the world. They emphasize high quality, appeals to all guests with its distinctive combination of attentive personalized service and flavorful entry served in inviting, comfortable atmosphere. Access to the site is via thirty foot, thirty-six foot common access along the frontage and a twenty-foot access on the north side of the property. Days and hours of operation are Sunday to Thursday from eleven AM to ten PM, Friday and Saturday from eleven to eleven. They're proposing to have approximately thirty employees, maximums per shift for a total of a hundred employees. Parking and landscaping, they are proposing a total of two hundred and thirty seating spaces, which require seventy-nine parking spaces. They will be having a total of a hundred and twenty-four, plus a shared agreement with the overall development. They will be complying with landscaping requirements. PNC and staff recommended approval for life review, subject to compliance with all city codes, CUP not to be transferable to others, and the acquisition of a business license prior to business occupancy. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, this request? I think everybody loves Olive Garden, so.
I'd like to close the public, or motion to close the public hearing.
Second, I mean, second, again. All those in favor say aye. We're ready to vote, right?
Most definitely make a motion to approve, and I guess the secret is out. Where's Teklo? Secret's out. We're, we're getting an Olive Garden.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for Olive Garden. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. What's the, there's two ordinance, right?
Yeah, just to clarify it for both the?
It's for the conditional use permit of self-on-side consumption of alcohol beverages and adoption of, for the wet zone.
Yes, sir. The first one would be fifty-three zero seven, and the wet zone would be fifty-three zero eight.
Oh, that's the one you were, you wanted approved earlier. Okay. Number eighteen?
Number eighteen is a discussion in action to amend the garage sale ordinance amending Chapter eighty-two, sales Article two, garage, porch, yard, clubhouse, recreational hall, roomage, tent, and estate sales. Section eighty-two dash thirty-six, term of the garage sale permit. Section eighty-two dash thirty-seven, maximum number of garage sales. If the council is inclined to approve, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. Several concerns have been voiced to the planning department in regards to the following: the number of tent sales permitted as the current, as, with the current ordinance, the number of estate sales that are allowed, and the number of days allowed for a clubhouse slash recreational hall part sale. Currently, our tent sales allows one, actually, two per year, once every six months. The estate sales are allowed two, two days out of the week, and the clubhouse only one day. Staff had a workshop with the council. These concerns were discussed, and this was the consensus that was considered during. For the tent sales to be allowed one every month, to be one day but not to exceed three day, estate sales to be allowed up to four days, but they must provide proof, and the clubhouse recreational park to be allowed one day but no more than three-day sales. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? Tent sale. This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? May I have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to close the public hearing.
Okay, we got a motion, a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any?
I'd like to make a motion. We've had several workshops on this subject and a lot of discussion, and so I go ahead and make approval for what we had already discussed previously in a workshop.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the discussion, to amend the garage sale ordinance amending Chapter eighty-two, sales Article two, garage, porch, yard, clubhouse, recreational hall, roomage, sale, tent, and estate sales. As presented by our planning, zoning director. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess, ordinance fifty-three oh nine?
Yes, sir.
Number nineteen?
Number nineteen is a discussion in action to amend the off-street parking requirements for commercial developments. If the council is inclined, inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. A concern has been voiced to the planning department in regards to the minimum standard requirements for commercial building. Most of the existing commercial buildings have outgrown their parking. When most of these commercial establishments were originally presented to staff, they were considered shell buildings for the majority of the time. The parking for a commercial building is based on square footage. It is not until the owner sells or rent the unit that staff has an idea of the proposed use. Off-street parking is calculated based on the use, and if the use is unknown, then it's calculated based on square footage. The off-street parking requirements for commercial developments outside the central business district has not been amended since September fourteen of eighty-one. During the workshop held with the city council, several council members, we visited different restaurants and noticed the need. So in order to compromise and come to an agreement, they opted for changing the minimum square foot requirements from four hundred square feet for the first four hundred to three hundred square feet, which is just reducing it a hundred square feet. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you. We have a public hearing. Anybody for or against this item, this request? May I have a motion to close the public?
Go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion to?
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
It's seen every two hundred square feet. Are we doing every three hundred or is it every two hundred?
No, it's three hundred. That was the original proposal. So that's why it's listed. But what was approved in the consensus is three hundred.
I'd like to make an emotion that it's, we approve what we discussed, which was three hundred in our workshop.
And, and before it's, it's second, may I ask for one clarification? It's, it's said to, to take effect immediately upon passage and publication according to law. And just to note, for, for the minutes, we're not applying And just to note for, for the minutes, we're not applying this to anything that's already been submitted as of today's date.
It's for anything new coming into the...
Anything new coming after today.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna motion in a second to approve the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number twenty?
Item number fifty-three ten.
Fifty-three ten.
Item number twenty is a discussion and action to adopt the special use permit. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. A directive was given to staff to work on an ordinance that would give the city manager the authority to approve a permit for certain special events to, to help expedite the process. During a workshop held on April third, the city council discussed the special use permit, and they considered the different types of events that would qualify for this permit and the process that needed to be followed in order to, for the permit to be granted. The applicant will still need to submit an application proposed, submit the dates proposed for the operation, a site plan showing the parking, and would need to comply with all city codes. The following events that would qualify for a special use permit would be city-sponsored events, sponsored, this would be any events that the city is, is sponsoring, pop-up markets, one-day events, and events that would need city manager's discretion. This would not include anything that has to do with the sale of alcohol. The sale of alcohol would still need to come before the, with, for the city council. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? Soon, no? Anybody for or against this request? If not...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Got a motion and a...
Second.
Second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Mayor Protam, I'd like to go ahead and approve, as discussed in a workshop, the agenda item as proposed.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve what we discussed and was proposing on the workshop. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Twenty-one?
Item twenty-one is a dis...
Item fifty-three eleven.
Oh, sorry.
Fifty-three eleven. Thank you, Anna for...
Item number twenty-one is a discussion and action to rescind parking on the grass ordinance number fifty-zero-one. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. This, this ordinance was originally created because code enforcement officers were enforcing this citations are based on a definition of off-street parking requirements and not within actual ordinance, restricting the parking on the grass. This ordinance was adopted by the council on March twenties to twenty-twenty-one. Shortly after the adoption of this ordinance, staff received numerous complaints regarding the adoption of the ordinance. The complaints referred to city was only targeting the older subdivisions that don't have the room for a two-car driveway. The postmaster had a concern because the residents were parking on the street and blocking the mailboxes, making it impossible to deliver the mail. On February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, this ordinance was reconsidered either to enforce or rescind, and during that meeting, this item was tabled, and this, I, this ordinance was put on a moratorium on issuing citations. In the meanwhile, it was revisited. During the workshop on April two, April third, twenty-twenty-three, the council considered this ordinance, and the consensus was to rescind the ordinance but still enforce the junk vehicles parked on the street or any health and, and any health and sanitation ordinance that were within the property. The only thing is vehicles parked on the grass would not be something that would, would be enforcing. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
We have a public hearing. That's, anybody for or against this request?
Now, I'm gonna talk about my other address, seven oh nine Oak Blade. Good afternoon. So you're saying to rescind, and that means the ordinance that was there, now you're gonna take it away, and you're gonna allow vehicles to park where they should be, where there should be a sidewalk? I don't understand. What, what do you mean rescind? To take away? And let's say that a, a home...
To answer your question quickly, the actual action, the action is to, yes, you're correct, to rescind the ordinance. There's an ordinance that would prohibit parking on, on grass, not, non-paved, and so it's rescinding it, so it's now like it didn't exist.
So then it's gonna depreciate a lot of our homes because the cars in, the neighbor in front has parking in the back, and not all of them do, but some in particular do have parking in the back, and they don't wanna park it in the back, so they're gonna park all their vehicles in front and reduce the value of our homes. And if somebody has to walk through the sidewalk or through, not the sidewalk, because there's not sidewalks, there's grass, it's okay. It's acceptable to make us look like we're all, all of us are disadvantaged. Why are you gonna rescind it? Because people wanna park their barbecue pits in the front? My gosh, I know that there's some streets, like I have a neighbor, Mr. Garza, who, who does, he's very polite, he says, hey, I'm gonna have a party, and then the, the road is real small, so the cars barely park on the, on the street, from reduces from two-way to one-way, so now it's gonna be okay for everybody to park their vehicles in front. Man, that looks really ghetto. I'm against that. I think, you know, there's a lot of people who, who should invest in a backyard. I'm against.
This is a public hearing. Anybody for or against this request? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close it.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any questions or comments?
I would like to see if we can possibly table the item for further discussion, because we did have two people come up today to give valid concerns and points, and I'd like to, before we remove it completely, I'd like to really evaluate it a little more. And still, the only reason I was wanting to rescind it when we were at the workshop was because of the concerns from the post office. But I really don't like people parking on the grass. So I don't know, can we table it?
You can table, yes. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Flores, on this one, would, there will be no public hearing, right, since we closed the public hearing? When, since we tabled it, it won't come back as a public hearing?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any items that you would like for us to discuss? If not, I will, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the approvals.
I would like to pull number twenty-six, only because she's been patiently waiting throughout the whole meeting.
And I would like number twenty-eight. So, okay, so, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items twenty-six and twenty-eight?
I'd like to make an, to approve all consent agenda items except twenty-six and, which one do you want?
Twenty-eight.
And twenty-eight?
Second.
For approval.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items with the exception of item number twenty-six and twenty-eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor Protam, if I may?
Oh, yes.
Item twenty-four will have resolution eighteen thirty. We'll skip twenty-six and twenty-eight. Item thirty will have eighteen thirty-one, thirty-four, eighteen thirty-two, thirty-five, eighteen thirty-three, and thirty-six, eighteen thirty-four.
Okay, number twenty-six, Mr. Peter.
Okay, good evening. Item number twenty-six is approval of a resolution and for City Mission, Texas, approving a professional services contract with Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson, LLP, for delinquent tax collection services under contingent fee contract, subject to approval by the Office of the Attorney General of Texas pursuant to chapter twenty-two fifty-four of the Texas Government Code.
Mayor Protam, just, just as a note, and the representative from Linebarger can come up, but this is a last legislative session. They require now, if you're gonna enter into a contingent fee agreement, there's cer- certain language in a resolution that has to be published and posted outside, out of City Hall, and so this is just to make us compliant with those requirements.
I know Ms. Canales is here. Would you like to step up?
Yes, thank you for the record. I'm Lucy Canales, the managing partner of Linebarger. The only thing I wanted to clarify is that the contract itself does, does not have to go to the AG anymore for approval, but everything else, you followed all the right steps, but you don't have to send it to the AG, and that's all I wanted to clarify. They, they changed that.
And Mayor Protam, I could say a couple of words. I think both companies presented very well, but I really, whatever genius you all had working on your presentation that did the great fruit, and you really show that you have a lot of employees in your company that are from Mission, born and raised in Mission, and I felt very comfortable that you all are gonna be giving the best service for our constituents. So thank you for that. We look forward to working with you likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I make a motion to go ahead and approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What's the resolution number?
Eighteen thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, number thirty-seven, stable. Number thirty-eight?
Number twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, sorry, twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty-eight, I'm so sorry.
It's a long night.
I believe so.
Six fifty-two.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and City Council, City Manager. Item number twenty-eight is seeking, the City Mission Police Department is requesting approval of resolution eighteen thirty-one?
Eighteen thirty-six.
Eighteen thirty-six, I apologize. Authorizing the submittal of the FY twenty-three cops hiring program grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, and authorizing mayor as the authorized representative. The program allows the hiring of police officers where the program pays seventy-five percent of the officer's salary and is matched by the city at twenty-five percent through the tenure of three, of the three-year grant. The City of Mission is requesting hiring eight officers from this grant for a total project cost of one million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred ninety-eight and sixteen cents. If awarded, the City of Mission would be required to support the project with a twenty-five percent match and must commit to maintain the positions for one additional year at a hundred percent expense to the city. Staff and city manager recommend the approval.
Okay. I know we had this type of program in the past, and there has not been no issues, right? I mean, it's, we've been getting this type of grant for so many, I would say, several times, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and we've been reimbursed.
And it's no issues, like some of the citizens are concerned, or nothing for us to be concerned.
That's correct. I, I did take note of that. So full transparency, letting chief know of any conditions for the use of these funds or, or to participate in the program itself, but no, we, we have not had any issues. We've had desk reviews. We've been in full compliance, operating the way we have in the past.
Some of those officers that were approved to, or were hired to this program are still working with us, correct?
That is correct, and it's for community-oriented policing.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve item number twenty-eight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with resolution number eighteen thirty-six. Okay, number thirty-eight?
Number thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
And Mayor Protam, just to let you know that the applicant has, is okay with a request to, to table that item?
Okay, this item is being requested to be table. May I have a motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to table item number thirty-seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Number thirty-eight now.
Number thirty-eight is a preliminary plat approval for El Corretero subdivision. This has been a twenty-acre tract of land out of lots twenty-five and twenty-six, block fifteen Texan Gardens subdivision. This in, this is in our suburban ETJ. The developer is Peña Chapa Development, IF. The engineer is South Texas Infrastructure. This is located on Western Road approximately twenty-seven hundred feet north of Six Mile Line. The developer is proposing thirty-three single-family residential lots. Water belongs to Agua Sud. They're proposing three hydrants to be used as filling station. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommended approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning office. This item is now before you.
May I have a...
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got a motion and a second to approve the prema, preliminary plat approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Number thirty-nine?
Item number thirty-nine is a final plat approval for Capicorne Estates subdivision. This is a nine-point forty-three acre tract of land, more or less, out of lot IF, Beal Miller's re-subdivision of lots sixteen through twenty, block four, Mission Road Estates. This is currently zone R one, single-family residential. The developer is Lack LLC. The engineer is Omero L. Gutierrez. This property is located fourteen hundred and fourteen, one thousand four hundred and seventy feet west of Inspiration Road along the south side of West Griffin Parkway. The developer is proposing forty-four single-family residential lots and one detention pond. The water belongs to Agua Sud. They're proposing to connect to an eight-in sewer line system that will provide service to all the lots. They're proposing five hydrants. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNZ and staff recommends approval, subject to payment of capital sewer recovery fees, park fees, and comply with all their format findings. This item is now before you.
So I go ahead and move for approval as per PNZ and staff, as long as they go through the three, meeting with the rules, complying with street alignment policy, and meeting any comments from the county planning department.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With those recommendations in place, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Council, City Manager. I have before you item number forty, which is authorization toward contract for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. Staff received five competitive bids as shown in your attachment. Recommendation is toward to South Texas Landscapes Irrigation and Pest Control LLC, who is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting all specifications at a cost of a hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred forty dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
We got an approval of, excuse me, we got a motion to approve, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yamera.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, Mayor Protam and City Council. Item number forty-one is the approval of the budget amendments. We have one in capital projects fund and one in M E D C fund. In capital projects fund, we have six million, two hundred twelve thousand, three hundred and two dollars in revenues and expenditures for the allocation of funding from the Texas Department of Transportation for the Taylor Road improvements, as approved by council on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. In the M E D C fund, we have ninety-five thousand in expenditures to allocate funds for shade structures to protect the area from wind and rain at the Mission Food Park area at Mission EDC. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
There's no unfinished business. Routine matter, city manager comments?
Yes, Mayor Protam, I'll keep it brief. I do have a couple of comments. I want to invite everyone here in the public for our evening of prayer this Thursday, May eleventh, starting at six p.m. at Mission Event Center, with the actual program starting at seven. Again, it's free event. We have plenty of information and resources, of course... at seven. Again, it's free event. We have plenty of information and resources, of course, a day of prayer for our community and everyone that wants to join, so invite everyone to please attend. On Friday, as Mr. Techo Garcia mentioned, we are going to have a, the announcement of UTRGV coming into our seat building, and that's May the twelfth, on Friday at eleven AM. Everyone is welcome to attend at the seat building. On Friday, we will be having music at the park, May twelfth, six-thirty to nine-thirty PM at Leo Peña Placito Park. Next Monday, we will be hosting the police memorial service here at the Mission Police Department Courtyard, May the fifteenth, at ten AM. Everyone is welcome for that event as well. And I do want to also mention the mental health event that we are partnering up with E3, the nonprofit organization, May the twenty-third, at seven PM at the Mission Event Center. Again, invite everyone to attend. It's a free event for everyone with plenty of entertainment and information for everyone, for the families. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor's comments? Is this, any comments?
No, of course, I always have comments. First and foremost, I'd like to give a huge thanks to the Mission Police Department and the police officers, Miss Amy Tiherina and your Crime Victims Coordinator, Isella, for putting, like, probably you all are getting better and better every year. I don't miss a single crime victims event, honoring the survivors and remembering those victims that have passed away due to a crime. This year was extra special. They planted trees in loving memory of their family members, and it was so beautiful. Thank you very much, Chief, for allowing your staff to do such an amazing event, and I just, I don't know how you're going to top it, but you all always do, so thank you for that. Of course, at the beginning of this meeting, at the end, everybody always gives me credit, right, but I really don't want the credit. I'm just so happy that the day has come that we are all talking about the stigma that nobody wants to talk about, and we're talking about mental health. That means a lot, and so I hope, because you all took time of your busy schedules to be here tonight to listen to us, talk about the meetings and stuff, I really hope that you all join us for the mayor's evening of prayer focusing on mental health. It's going to be very beautiful, and I think it's going to be very impactful and probably life-changing for many people. So if you do have, find something to do this Thursday, I'd like for everybody to join us at the Mission Event Center. It would mean so much to so many people, and thank you for being here also. God bless you all.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to also invite the public. It's going to be different, the prayer. We got some agencies, and we got a lot of churches participating, and, I mean, please, it's not, it's open to the public, so please join us. Okay, executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, to go into executive session pursuant to Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good morning, everyone. It is an exciting day for the city of Mission and the city of McAllen as we break ground on the Taylor Road Reconstruction Project Phase One. I am Kenya Gomez, Media Relations Director for the city of Mission and want to thank all of you for being here. So, as all of you probably already know, Taylor Road is what divides Mission and McAllen. So this is a collaboration between both cities, TechDOT and of course, Hidalgo County. We will start off the ceremony by recognizing our elected officials and representatives that are here today. We'll start off with Mission Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garza. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Ruben Plata. Councilwoman Jessica Ortega. Councilman Abiel Flores. Councilman Jose Alberto Vela. And of course, our City Manager, Mr. Randy Perez. Now, from the city of McAllen, we have Mayor Javier Villalobos, who wasn't able to make it, but we thank him for his efforts and everything he does for the community. We have Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Joaquín JJ Samora. We also have Commissioner District Three, Omar Quintanilla. And Commissioner District Six, Pepe Cabeza de Vaca. And also City Manager, Mr. Roy Rodriguez. We also want to thank McAllen City Engineer, Mr. Eduardo Mendoza. And Assistant City Managers, Jeff Johnston and Michelle Rivera. We also have Ms. Joni Forina here, representing Precinct Four Commissioner, Ms. Eli Torres, and the McAllen ISD School Board. Also, from McAllen, from the McAllen Public Utilities, we have Ernie Williams. And Parks and Rec Director, Danny Moline. Thank you for being here. And like I said, this is a project with TechDOT. So, we also want to recognize Mr. Rex Costley, he's a Deputy District Engineer. Also want to thank Hidalgo County Commissioners, Mr. Eddie Cantú from Precinct Two, and Mr. Ever Villarreal, Precinct Three. And of course, the contractor-
Good morning, everyone. It is an exciting day for the city of Mission and the city of McAllen as we break ground on the Taylor Road reconstruction project phase one. I am Kenya Gomez, media relations director for the city of Mission and want to thank all of you for being here. So as all of you probably already know, Taylor Road is what divides Mission and McAllen. So this is a collaboration between both cities, TechDOT and of course, Idago County. We will start off the ceremony by recognizing our elected officials and representatives that are here today. We'll start off with Mission Mayor Nori Gonzalez-Garza. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Ruben Plata. Councilwoman Jessica Ortega. Councilman Aviel Flores. Councilman Jose Alberto Vela. And of course, our city manager, Mr. Randy Perez. Now from the city of McAllen, we have Mayor Javier Villalobos, who wasn't able to make it, but we thank him for his efforts and everything he does for the community. We have Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Joaquín JJ Samora. We also have Commissioner District Three, Omar Quintanilla. And Commissioner District Six, Pepe Cabeza de Vaca. And also City Manager, Mr. Roy Rodriguez. We also want to thank McAllen City Engineer, Mr. Eduardo Mendoza. And Assistant City Managers, Jeff Johnston and Michelle Rivera. We also have Ms. Joni Forina here, representing Precinct Four Commissioner, Ms. Eli Torres. And the McAllen ISD School Board. Also from McAllen, from the McAllen Public Utilities, we have Ernie Williams. And Parks and Rec Director, Danny Moline. Thank you for being here. And like I said, this is a project with TechDOT. So we also want to recognize Mr. Rex Costley, he's a Deputy District Engineer. Also want to thank Idago County Commissioners, Mr. Eddie Cantu from Precinct Two. And Mr. Ever Villarreal, Precinct Three. And of course, the contractor, Texas Cordia. Managing Contractor, SAM CS. And Consulting Engineer, LNG. Now please help me welcome Mission Mayor Nori Gonzalez-Garza.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Today is an exciting day. As you all know, this is a joint project between our TechDOT, our county partners, and the city of McAllen, and of course, the city of Mission. We've been waiting on this for, I'm not going to say how many years, but it's been a while. So saying that, I also want to thank our two previous mayors, Beto Salinas and Dr. O'Gania. They were both involved in this project. So you can kind of tell how long that's been. So again, I want to thank everyone for being here. This is a great project. It's going to enhance this area tremendously. And in doing that, it brings development, which basically helps with our tax base. So again, thank you so much for being here. Again, this is a great project. It's very well planned out and we are just looking forward to seeing this to the end. So thanks again, and have a great day. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mayor. And up next, we have McAllen's Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. JJ Samora.
Thank you, Kenya. Thank you for your warm welcome and remarks, Mayor Garza. And thank you to all members of the City Council for the city of Mission. This is truly a great day for both our communities. I know that the word divide has already been used, you know, in terms of dividing McAllen and Mission. I like to see this project, Taylor Road, as a project that mends and binds our community together. Because we both stand to lead to future successes and developments as a result of this project. And it's very true, as Mayor Garza had stated, this is a project a long time in coming. I'm 51 years old, I'm not afraid of saying that. And I really thought I'd never see the day where good old country road, Taylor Road, would become expanded and widened, you know, from the expressway to Two Mile Line and hopefully in the future, you know, more northward. So today, as I, to colloquialize our city manager, it's a great day for both our communities, the McAllen and Mission. But I'm going to add to that, it's a fantabulous day for Mission and McAllen. So that's done of my ad libbing. Councilman Flores and Commissioner Quintanilla had already previously stated to me, since